Call this Dallas City Council meeting to order for Monday, November the 18th, 2024, 7:00 PM. Rule call, please.
Counselor President Schilling.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Bari Antos.
Here.
Counselor Briggs.
Here.
Counselor Collins.
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselors Jantsch and Verden are excused.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have some introductions.
I do, so we have a recognition tonight, more of an announcement from our fire chief, April Wallace.
I am happy to report that we are getting ready to put our new fire engine into service, and I would like to formally invite you to the push-in and ribbon cutting. It will be December 4th at 6:00 PM. And Mayor, I'd like you to be the lead on cutting the ribbon, and then any councilors that are wanting to be there, we would like you to help with the push-in of the fire engine. It's a tradition that we have in the fire service, when you get a brand-new piece of equipment, you wash it, and then you push it into the fire station, so it can be ready for service. We will also provide dinner afterwards as well.
Maybe you can touch earlier than that push?
I mean, if you want to push, you can.
You can wash it.
You can wash it. We'll put you to work. All right. Thank you. December 4th, 6:00 PM, at the fire station. Thank you.
Mayor, if you'd lean forward to your mic. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing. Is this the one that's been?
So, yeah, I'll talk about this one. So, the public hearing for the Development Code Updates addressing requirements in Senate Bill 1537 needs to be postponed. So, if anyone from the public is here tonight for that topic, we were not able to have a quorum for the Planning Commission meeting, which was scheduled before this, so that has been rescheduled for this week. This hearing for the council will be scheduled for December 9th at 7:00 PM. So, if anyone is here to testify on that item, it's not going to happen tonight. It will happen on December 9th at 7:00 PM.
Tuesday?
That is a Monday night. It is the second Monday in December.
Second?
We are not meeting the second. We are meeting the ninth.
The second week of the?
We're going to meet the second Monday.
And we changed it.
Yeah.
Next thing on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for you to talk to us, ask us questions, and we will not get into a debate with you guys, but we will talk to you or listen to you, and it's your chance to talk to us. First thing on the person is Ann Hurd. You'll have three minutes.
Anything to add? A few things that I'd... Ann Hurd, President of 623 Southwest Hater, President Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center. And the Dallas Aquatic Center was formed to take care of emergency things at the pool. So, if something happens, it needs to be fixed immediately. We fix it immediately. There's no close down. There's no waiting weeks for parts with something closed down. So, but before I get into that, high school swim season starts today, and Dallas and Central are both practicing at the pool, and they will be having swim meets at the pool, too. They added three sets of lessons for fall that will run next week until just before Christmas, and Perry Dale Middle School came for a rental on Friday. The charter schools also come and use the pool. I don't... It's on a regular basis, but I don't know what the timeframe is. So, you know, we've been fundraising $15,000 for the sand filters. We're almost halfway there. And I went into the pool, and Gretchen Jennifer met me at the door, and they said, "Come with me." So, I followed them, and we went into the mechanical room. And over at that pipe, over on the right side, it's leaking! It's gushing out of the pipe. It's a check valve that the water comes in from the city into the pool, and it's not supposed to be gushing out. And they had a little trough and everything over to the drain, and, you know, it was all taken care of. $9,000 to fix it. So, Jennifer said, "Well, we've got the $9,000 in your account. Can we spend it?" I said, "Absolutely, do it." But now, now we're only about a third of our way towards the $15,000 that we need. We've had 30 people send in donations, anywhere from $15 to $20 to $500. Today, I got a check from Home Comfort for $1,000, because we also asked all our business banner people to please contribute to these sand filters. And I tell you, this community loves that pool, and they just step right up. And these are donors who have never donated before, that we're getting these $100 and $500 checks from. So, it's just really heartwarming, and when you see all the hundreds of people at the pool all the time, it's easy to understand. So, thanks for building it and letting us help keep it running, and the maintenance budget for the pool this fiscal year, I believe, includes $140,000 for new boiler. So, that puts a lot of pressure on us to take care of everything else, but we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Luann Meyer. State your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
My name is Luann Meyer. I live at 489 Southeast Mill Street, and I currently serve on the Dallas School Board. So, good evening, Mayor and council members, and thank you for this opportunity to come before you this evening. I am here to request your support for a meaningful initiative in our school district. In order to expand our music programs and offer more students the chance to participate, we are seeking donations of new and gently-used musical instruments. There are many families that can't afford to purchase an instrument for their child, and so by the community coming forth with instruments, this will help us provide students with the tools they need to explore their musical talents. This evening, I will leave you with some flyers that give you the details of this drive that we have going on. The focus of the instruments is on brass and woodwinds. We will certainly accept percussion or any other instruments you might have. The drop-off locations are Citizens Bank and Unklaw Bank. Their drive runs through a week from Wednesday, which is November 27th. My name and phone number is on here for anyone that has questions. I'd be happy to even come to your home and pick up an instrument if you have one. So, please consider sharing this request with family, friends, and local businesses, and hopefully, together, we can make lasting impact on our students' education. So, thank you for your support.
I have two callers on the phone that I'll need to call on and see if they're willing to participate. Caller ending with a phone number ending 9361, please unmute if you'd like to provide input. And the person on the phone with a phone number ending 6495, please unmute if you'd like to provide comment. Hearing none, we can move on.
Next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. To approve the November 4th, 2024 work session minutes, and to approve this November 4th, 2024 City Council meeting minutes. Do you want to? Move to a quick?
Second.
Second, if there are three or five missing.
Aye.
So, nothing removed. Reports and comments from the mayor. Council members. Yes.
I have a comment.
Okay.
So, I'd like to discuss something that's pretty fundamental to the success of any government, and that's accountability. And while there are many ways to look at leadership, we must really remember that governance is not a popularity contest. It's not a matter of who has the best social media following. It's about fulfilling our responsibilities that comes with being elected to serve. It's about showing up. It's about doing the hard work that the people of this city entrusted us to do. And unfortunately, our city council operates under a pretty lax set of rules that allows some councilors to abuse their attendance responsibilities. These meetings are vital to the functioning of our city, and each city councillor's presence is crucial for informed decision-making, effective governance, and accountability to the people that they represent. When councilors continually fail to attend meetings or show up unprepared, it sends a message that they do not take their responsibility seriously. This situation is not a matter of inconvenience. It's a matter of respect, or disrespect, and we should not continue to allow this to happen. Our current rules are insufficient, and the city council needs more stringent attendance policies that hold councilors accountable for being present and engaged. Leadership is about commitment. Leadership is about showing up when it counts. Those who were given the vote of the people of Dallas must step forward and take the necessary actions to put stronger attendance policies in place. You, those who were elected, must step forward and take the necessary actions to put stronger attendance policies in place. You need to ensure that councilors who were elected are required to be present at meetings. They need to come prepared. They need to engage, and you need to set higher standards that the public rightfully expects of them, for the sake of good governance and for the sake of our city's future, for the sake of the people who put the trust in these leaders that they voted for. It is time for attendance to be an expectation and for the responsibility and commitment for the people who were elected. Thank you.
Any other comments for the council? Yes, the council.
I just... This musical instrument drive is near and dear to my heart. As a young man growing up in Boston, I was never musically gifted, but I always wanted to play the clarinet, and there was only one thing that was holding me back was money. My parents never had enough money to rent it or anything like that. Through the help of some humanistic teachers, they were able to just lend it out to me without money. One of... Two of the first things that are cut in the school district whenever there are cuts is music and arts. I for one will tell you that it is a really important thing for young men and young women to just test out their musical skills. It builds confidence. It builds so much teamwork, working together on a band or an orchestra. I hope everybody here will take this musical instrument drive to heart. It really helped me along. I was tutored by someone from the Boston Symphony Orchestra, because I just practiced over and over and over. Was relentless, and it really got me through the middle school and high school. And unfortunately, when I went to high school, they cut the music program, and I couldn't continue with that. So, really give this thing a good look, this musical instrument drive. It's a good thing.
Any else? Yes, if you could.
We spoke of this at our last meeting, but I just want to emphasize it again, the absolutely magnificent job that was done on the New Japanese Garden, and I also want one more time to shout out to Counselor Briggs for helping to light the fire that made it happen.
Next time you see Jennifer tell her good job, it is a group effort. With Black Park, Scrooge Rock. Yeah.
Always have.
Richmond City Manager and staff.
Hey, Kim, here. So, we have about five reports tonight. The first one is the Republic Services Annual Rate Review. So, I'll invite Julie Jackson and Kenneth to come up and discuss the proposed rate increase this year. They're looking at a 4.1% increase.
So, am I on? Okay, you can hear me, huh? Sorry, I had to do a little business on the way up here, but we do have a charitable foundation, and I... We are able to give to charitable organizations, and I think we can probably help with the pool fund as well. So, please do take advantage of that.
Oh, don't worry.
Be nice, she will.
I know. I've heard her before, and I am convinced that that will happen, so that's great. So, we're here for a couple reasons tonight, but mainly to talk to you about a rate adjustment using the Refuge Rate Index, which we've used for about the last, I think this is the 11th year that we have used this methodology for rate adjustment. And just to review it for you, I think you have it in your packet. You have a sheet that looks like this, and it probably makes no sense to anybody, so I'll just kind of go over that really quickly. What we do is we take CPI on June 30th, 2023, in this instance, and CPI June 30th, 2024, and we calculate the change. CPI was calculated at 3.3% at that point. That's the timeline that's used every year, so that it's apples to apples. And the weight of CPI is 75%. So, that was a 2.5% increase, and then the other percentages are 15% disposal at Coffin Butte, 10% disposal at PRC. And so, those added another 1.6%. So, 4.1% is the calculated increase for this year. And I know, I just wanted to point out, I mean, we're aware that we came in last year and asked for a big increase. That was for service level increase, and the CPI increase was also larger based on CPI. I think we're starting to see CPI level off. We would anticipate it would be even lower next year. And we come in every year and ask for these small increases, so that we don't end up every two or three years asking you for seven or nine or 10% increases, because we think those are really hard on people. I think it's much easier for people to get a smaller increase. This equates to about $1.10 per, the average, per residential customer. If you have questions about that, I'm happy to answer questions about that, and then I also wanted to just touch on the services that you implemented last year.
Any questions?
So, if there is a pullback next year, and the CPI is a negative, are we adjusting negatively?
We don't adjust negatively, but we have had zero years, zero increase years, sure.
So, we're always a year behind?
Six months. Yeah, six... We're six months behind, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we were six months behind when COVID hit, and things got really dicey, too. So, it kind of follows that way.
What happens if we say no?
Well, then, we would probably come back, and we'd look at what options were. This has been adopted as the way that we adjust rates, so it would really be probably a discussion about how do you want to adjust rates then? You know, and then we get into the conversation. I mean, we... When we look back, we've had lots of 7%, 9% increases, and that's probably the direction, if you change, that we'd end up going every two or three years, and that can be tough. I will also tell you that Pacific Powers increase this year is going to be 14%. Even Northwest Natural is almost 5%, I believe, 4.5%. So, we're underneath those. I know that you had a presentation from Rehab before we were here tonight, and we were... I wouldn't say we work with them, but I say that it's a small industry, and we're... We talk with them quite often, and the cost of landfilling waste is going up, for sure, and at some point, when waste has to be hauled much farther, it will go up again. So, we think that keeping these landfill costs down as much as we can now is the best way to go.
So, Julie Larry's question, Counselor Briggs' question, spawned a question in my mind. Is the methodology that we're using in Dallas, is that used kind of throughout all your cities that you serve, or is there a different methodology?
About 90% of our cities, Corvallis, Philomena, Albany, Millersburg, Lubbock, and the list goes on.
So, if next year was a zero CPI increase?
Yep.
And you came back next year, would we be, in essence, looking at 4.1 again?
If CPI was zero, so if that calculated difference was zero, then you'd be looking at a 0% increase.
Said no today.
Oh, if you said no today, no, not necessarily. So, we'd probably come back in and say, "Well, if we skip a year..." It doesn't really work if we skip a year. So, the... This methodology is intended to do small increases, or at least look at the increases each year. If we... If you skip years in years when you don't like the amount, and then say yes in years when you do like the amount, then we get out of line, and we come back in and ask for a higher amount. I mean, I hate to... That's just the reality. So, not necessarily. And I don't know what it would be next year. You know, we're all kind of anticipating that it's less. I've calculated... I didn't calculate Dallas, but in most of my other cities, the average increase over that 11-year period is about 3%. So, over the years, it's pretty low, if you look at the average.
Per year?
No, the average per year, yeah.
Citizens are just getting hammered as you mentioned with, you know, Pacific Power, Northwest Natural Gas, everything.
We are not unsympathetic to that, absolutely.
Lots of people are flat now and it's one guy.
We're all hoping.
postpone that.
You know, we are out... I meant to, and I apologize, because I didn't get the number of people who've downsized to a 65-gallon cart or a 32-gallon cart as a result of being able to put all of those leaves in the yard debris cart, all of the recycling in the recycle cart, but we know it's pretty substantial. Right after that was implemented, we had a lot of phone calls and a lot of people switching, and it might be something that we should, you know, put something on the city's website again, or a note on invoices to remind people that if you're not filling up your cart, you can downsize and save money that way, too.
And we were among the many people who switched, so I would be interested in hearing those numbers.
Yeah. I would absolutely get that number for you, and I can send it to Brian right away. And I... Again, I apologize. It was on my list, and then my day got away from me.
She's in the service.
I'm sorry, what?
Services.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that we are seeing a lot of yard debris carts out this time of year with leaves in them. I know that I've been watching in my neighborhood... I live in Albany, but in my neighborhood, I live near a storm drain, and I've been watching my neighbor's leaves go down that storm drain a lot, and so we know that it's really better for your stormwater system if leaves are in the carts, and that's another great thing. We've... In newsletters and things, reminded people to put those leaves in the yard debris cart. It's also cleaner in your neighborhood, and cleaner in front of the house, too. So, we've been seeing a lot of yard debris carts out, and a lot heavier yard debris carts with wet leaves, so we know people are doing that. And then, right shortly after we implemented the weekly service for yard debris and recycling, we did... Had some drivers doing some ride-alongs with other drivers and reporting back to us about what we call set out, and we did see a lot of those carts set out. We saw people using them right away, and we had a pretty large influx of phone calls the week before it began from people wanting to know why we didn't pick up that week, because they were ready to have weekly service. So, I think... I know it was a big increase, but I think you made a good decision. I think we have not had complaints about it. We've had people call and happy to have that service, or maybe once in a while, we get somebody who doesn't know it's weekly, and when they call, because they didn't get a calendar telling them which week is yard debris, and when we tell them it's weekly, they're really happy about that. So, I think it was a good service for the city, even though it was tough.
I could just add that with the leaf pickup program that you also run here in Dallas that happened over the weekend, and so, at least in my neighborhood, which is an older neighborhood, a lot of trees, a lot of leaves got picked up off the ground. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I suppose they're all back down today.
They're working on it.
I think they are. My neighbor, they are.
Has the city received any complaints about... You've not received any complaints about the increase.
I wouldn't probably say none, maybe at the time they got a call or two, but most of the calls were just, "When does it start? Can I put it out every week?"
Have we, has the city?
So, we kind of had the same story that Republic Services had, and a lot of the calls that they probably got were referred from us, because we heard right away... I know Kim received a lot of phone calls, kind of wondering, you know, "Hey, why did it go up so much?" And it was an opportunity for us to educate them to say, "Well, we went to weekly yard debris and recycling pickup." And so, we also always let them know that, you know, you have an opportunity to downsize your carts if you're not filling up your carts, especially going to weekly, and we know several people did that, and they wanted to know, "How do I do that?" And so, we gave them the number, and they were able to call and make those changes. So, I would say that we received, you know, Kim could probably give a better number than I could. I would say probably 15 to 20 calls at least, and those people, again, were ones that when we were able to tell them what, you know, why the changes went into effect and what their opportunities were, they were generally happy with that information.
The other thing I will just add, you've heard me this third year in a row, you've heard me talk about the Recycling Modernization Act, and I'm really happy to tell you that July of 2025, that goes into effect. So, there will be more materials that you can put into your recycling cart at that point, and that, again, may be another opportunity for people to downsize their trash cart once there are more plastics especially that can go into the cart. There'll also be an opportunity, we're kind of working with DEQ and an organization called CAA to come up with some more materials that can be collected at the depot. So, we're hoping that there's more and more material that comes out of the trash cart and goes into the recycling, and there won't be any additional cost for folks for the RMA materials. So, I promise. Not from us.
Questions?
But still not styrofoam or glass?
Well, styrofoam is one of the materials that is collected at no charge, though, at what they call Pro... Producer Responsibility Organization depots, and so, we're working to cite a depot, especially when you collect styrofoam, it really has to be collected at a staff depot. So, we're talking with them about how do we find a depot where we can staff it, or does the Recycling Modernization Act fund staff at the depot, or how do we do that? But we're looking to provide more services and how we can partner to do that. So, and again, that will not cost anything to the citizens of Dallas or any other city in Oregon.
Speaking for those of us who do live in older neighborhoods where there's a lot of debris, that weekly pickup really makes a difference. The cart fills up, you know, after three days, and you've got to wait 10 more days to empty it. It really helps.
How about food? Are you using it for food?
Starting to. It's a... Got to form new habits.
That's a process. It's definitely a process.
Got to form new habits, yeah.
Absolutely. Me, too.
But just having that... Having the weekly pickup makes a huge, huge difference, so kudos for that.
I just... Since we talked about styrofoam again, I just want to bring up, it is really important. Styrofoam is a huge bulk. While it's not heavy... our landfill, it ends up taking up space in our carts, I think is what you call our trash cans, right?
Yeah.
You call them a cart. And so if we can find a way, if you all can find a way to really urge our hub, transfer, is that what they're called, the hub?
The Rehab.
The Rehab, to make sure that we have a place to bring that, because we don't right now, and it's inconvenient at best to find a place to bring that styrofoam, and all of the stuff that we buy comes packaged in it. And if we can find a way to bring that, it will make it better, and it never goes away.
It never goes away. To me, it's just a horrible, it's a wonderful product in that it does exactly what it's supposed to do, and it's lightweight.
Forever.
And it does it forever, and it never goes away, and I avoid it at all cost if I can, but you never know.
You order something, you don't know how it's going to come.
You absolutely do not. I try really hard, if I buy something and it comes packed in pulp paper or some other product, to tell that company that I like it, not that they care what I think, but if they, they care what a lot of people think. But one thing I'll tell you, too, is that we're hearing that as part of the RMA, there may be the opportunity for what they're calling rolling events. So if the city of Dallas is interested, we could talk to them about an event, maybe once or twice a year or quarterly, where they come with a, they come with a portable densifier for styrofoam, and so they collect it, and then it's densified on the spot, because, you know, there's hardly any plastic there, it's all air.
Problem with, I'm not going to take up too much of time, I promise, but the problem with that is that you then expect the general person, and I'm a, God forbid, hippie, but you then expect a person, a general person, to then keep all of that, to find a place in my yard, or someplace where I'm going to keep all of that, and hope, hold on to it until this rolling event, and it's, again, a bulky thing, and then I'm going to keep it all and somehow keep, and it's styrofoam, so every little breeze.
Yep, I agree.
It flutters away.
Well, I can tell you for sure that the Salem Kaiser Transfer Station will be collecting styrofoam at no charge. So if you go, I mean, you know, it takes planning. If you're going into Salem to shop, and you want to take it with you, it will be able to be taken there.
So what a wonderful opportunity for another community. So now I'm going to spend my dollars to drive to another community, and while I'm there, I will go ahead and have lunch or a coffee and spend my money there.
And you'll go into shopping and buy something that comes in styrofoam.
Absolutely. So I, you know.
Do you want me to talk with the RMA folks about styrofoam in Dallas? Because if that's what you're directing me to do, then I will go back.
I'm not directing anybody, but y'all got elected.
I'm happy to go back to them and talk about what we can do in Dallas.
I'm going to stop talking about styrofoam.
I will tell you that we found a place, we think, in Philomath to put a depot, and we think they're going to be able to collect styrofoam there, and maybe there's, it's the Arc, maybe, in Philomath, and if there's a nonprofit here that would like to partner, if you know of one, get ahold of me, and we can talk with them. Because we're kind of, we're open to helping in any way that we can. So let me know. I feel your pain about styrofoam, I really do.
David. Since we're talking about styrofoam so much, and since we had this workshop, talking about the proposed possible maybe new transfer station, let's make sure that, and I don't know if, at this early stage, what, if anything, could be done about it, but let's make sure that styrofoam is part of the conversation we're having with the county about that. If they're not already thinking about it, let's at least put it into the mix.
So there's a recommended motion at the bottom of page 24 for the council to consider.
I move to direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution approving a 4.1% increase to the Republic Services rate effective January 1, 2025.
Second.
Second.
On the report from Republic Services, it says the rate's effective February 1.
Correct, because we didn't get an increase until February 1 last year, it was postponed as we talked about the different options, and so we wouldn't implement an increase sooner than 12 months.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close opposed, carried unanimously.
Nine.
Seven, or five to two.
That's a majority.
You.
Public Works Building Project Update.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. So as we're moving closer towards the beginning of the construction of the Public Works Building down at the Shops Yard, I wanted to invite Gary and Tom Gilson to come up and talk about kind of the project, you know, the money that we've spent so far, where we at with the bid process and award of that, and other aspects of the project. So welcome, Gary and Tom.
So we're excited to be here to talk to you about the building project. So I think I'll start from just telling you about the building first. It's a building that has a little over 22,000 square feet total, about 16,600 feet is on the ground floor. The front, 30% of that ground floor is dedicated to basically our crew quarters and our administrative staff offices, and then the back, 80% of the ground floor is our fleet, fleet operations. Fleet will see a significant increase in our floor space and number of bays that we have for servicing vehicles, which has been a major driving force for this project, among other things. Let's see, where else should I want to go with this? So we bid the project in June, our first outing for the bid, and it came in a little under $4 million, which I felt was more than I wanted it to be. And so rather than just award that, we went back and engaged our architects in a value engineering process to identify areas where we could perhaps save money, but still essentially get the same building. I think we accomplished that, and I think the resulting bid bore us out on that. We're at a little over 3.6 million was the low bid. We did receive 10 bids, which in my career, that's, I think that might be the most number of bids I've gotten for a particular project. We had gotten six on the first go-around. So I always feel good when we have multiple bids, because it really tells us where the market is. So I think we can have some confidence that our low bid really is a good, solid bid for what the building is. So that's where we are on the building and the bid. To date, we've spent a little over $900,000 on the building, on the project so far. About 2/3 of that, council's aware, is the building package, which has been delivered to the Public Works Yard and is waiting for construction. The other 3/3 of what we've spent so far is things like architectural engineering, our geotech fees, developing our temporary staff quarters, the temporary fleet operations in the H Building, and then utility adjustments. So we wanted to go over some of the finances for the project. As we launch into things, the council will be a part of how this all comes together. Costs yet to be incurred, when you look at the construction contract resulting from our bid process, and then we throw in other expenses, like the demolition of the existing building, some of the electrical equipment and transformer we need to buy for the project, our networking communications aspects of the project. When the building's done, we need to buy furniture and appliances, and then there's some site work with parking, paving, sidewalks, and landscape. So yet to be incurred in costs is a little over $4 million. So, which means the total project, when we're done, what we've already spent and what we're looking to spend is just probably right around $5 million. Right now, we have almost $1.3 million in the current year budget for the project, so that is money that we can apply towards this $4 million that we still need to cover, which means we have a little over $2.7 million, maybe $2.8, that we're going to need to finance. In working with Brian and Cecilia on how we get that done, what we would like to do is, so we can keep the project moving ahead, is initially have some stopgap funding through an interfund loan, probably from some SDC funds that could be paid back in a matter of some months. And the reason for that, and why we wouldn't finance it right away, is because we're looking at a larger financing that would include two other infrastructure projects. So you're not only hearing about the Public Works Building, I also need to tell you about the Godsy Road project and the intersection at Levens and Ellendale. So those are two projects that we would like to be able to wrap up together with the Public Works Building into one kind of comprehensive financing. So let's talk about Godsy first. At the last meeting, I did my annual report to you folks. At that time, I told you that we are looking at two different projects for Godsy, one for the bridge and one for the road south of the bridge at approximately Olive South, down to Monmouth Cut Off Road. We have a fund, historically, we have a funding agreement with ODOT for the Godsy project at $1.4 million. We have been going through a process just recently to repackage that, because the agreement we had with ODOT said we had to do the entire length of Godsy to spend any of that money, and that's not going to happen at this point. ODOT has agreed to amend our agreement, and right now, we're only waiting on the state to get us that funding agreement back, $1.4 million. So in addition to that, that project is looking like it's 3.3.
3.3.
3.3 million. And so the balance of that, a big part of that will come out of our street SDCs and some out of stormwater, because we are expanding our facilities significantly. We're not simply putting the same two-lane country-style road back in. This is going to be full sidewalks, gutters, bike lanes, much wider than it is now, which would be the street and the bridge. So, and then whatever SDCs don't pick up, then would have to come out of the street fund, now the regular fund, which is that portion that we would identify as part of the potential financing. So let's talk now about the intersection project at Levens and Ellendale. That project is one that we have an active application under the Safe Routes to School program with ODOT. We are, we've made it through both of the rounds for, in their funding consideration, and we expect to hear in January or February whether or not we're funded. That program funds in, not in a specific amount of money, but in a range, and so we are in the $2 to $2 million range, which if we are awarded, it will pay for almost all of the project, maybe all of it. We also have some developer contributions to that project, which I think make up maybe 6% to 10% of the project, so that'll help buy that down. So this project will become part of the financing only if we are not successful with the Safe Routes to School application, and we're not going to know about that until early next year, which is why we're putting off going ahead and doing a financing right now. We want to know what is all into that package. So when some of that clarifies, and when I actually have an ODOT amended agreement for Godsy to bring back to you, then I think we'll be in a position to put our numbers together and know what we might need to do in the way of financing. What else can I tell you? So back to the, back to the Public Works Building, we've tried hard to keep our costs down in a couple of areas where I think we've done really well, and this is a credit to Tom mostly, because Tom's really kind of, he's done a lot of the legwork for this project. He found an opportunity where there was a school district up in Washington State that had a building project they abandoned. They happened to have HVAC units, brand new, that they were surplusing out at, I think we picked it up for several thousand dollars. This was the equipment that would have cost us around $100,000. So kudos to Tom on that. Also, when we were looking at our temporary quarters, the easiest thing would have been to go out, buy a couple modular units, you know, new, bring them in and set them up. Instead, we found units that were on auction from the Salem Kaiser School District. We bid on those. We picked those up for, I think, $5,700 bucks, wasn't that what it was, for the two? So we had some moving costs and setup, and yes, there's been some renovation we've had to do with those buildings. We're nearly done with those.
Still compared to buying new ones.
What's that?
Still compared to buying new ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, and I think they're going to serve us just fine. In fact, right now, we're working with the county to move the computer network from the old building over to the modular that will house our supervisors, and as soon as we get that scheduled, which should be in the next week or so, we're moving the supervisors into the modular. We've got just the final plumbing and electrical in the crew modular to accomplish, and as soon as that's done, we'll be moving the crew, and so things are starting to happen quickly at this point. But I wanted to, you know, let you know that we really have tried to keep our costs down. Those were two of the most significant ways, but then also the value engineering process we went through. I wish I could tell you exactly how much we saved on that. All I can tell you is the first, the first bid round, our low bid was over 3.9, and the most recent one is a little over 3.6. So I like to think that we accomplished something in that process. So Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
I think you.
Yeah. So I think I've covered what I wanted to update you on. If you have questions, and I'm sure you will, I and Tom are happy to respond.
David. Yeah, looking at the floor plan for the new building, unless I missed it, which with these glasses is very possible, I don't see a compass rose anywhere. Can you tell me how the building sits on the property?
Oh, on the site, yeah. In fact, when we had the tour two weeks ago, I was trying to point out the pins for that. If you can picture where the old Shops Building is, and in the back, you have the old fleet area of that building, there's probably the back third of, or less of that building at an angle is the front of the new building. And then it extends, the new building from that frontage extends 166 feet back towards where the storage buildings are on the other, the opposing property to the east, and then the building itself is 100 feet wide.
So the building is basically oriented east-west?
Yes. Okay.
Are we able to work on the big fire trucks?
It's indoors now with this footprint?
Yes.
Absolutely. So we're not working outside. Right. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
The 11th Street, if it's all paid for by ODOT, and the developer is obligated to pay, I think, what, 6%? Can we divert that 6% somewhere else?
Actored in.
Give it back to him, or are we stuck with that?
Yeah, we have a development agreement. I can't remember what the details of that were, but we contemplated getting the grant versus not getting the grant, and the money that they pay to us comes regardless of whether or not we get the grant. Yeah.
I don't want to be famous last words here, but I think we got an excellent shot at that grant. We participate, and the reason I think that is, last year, 2023, we participated with ODOT and with the school district in a project to identify safety issues on routes to school, and this intersection was identified as one of those projects that needed to happen. So I think we already have some buy-in from ODOT, certainly from the school district. So I'm feeling optimistic about it, but could be famous last words, too.
Whatever this works out, I'll bet you dollars to donuts, we get this done before they get 2251 done. they get twenty-two fifty-one done.
Probably, probably.
Now for my questions. I'm really looking for some insurances. I mean, I know, understand engineer estimates. We came at three point three, three point nine. We're now at four point nine or closer to five. How confident are we in this being under five?
You know, I've, I've done projects, I've never done a project exactly like this, but I've done infrastructure projects for most of my career, and I can tell you, there are projects that are are wonderful to work with because the costs stay exactly where you think they should, and others just, there are surprises. It could be more than five million. At this point, I think we've covered a lot of our bases. I think we've, we've looked at a lot of of the design aspects that might cost us more money, and I think we've made adjustments there. So I think we've taken a lot of steps to make sure that our numbers are as solid as solid as they can be, but I don't want to sit here and tell you for sure it's going to be under five million because it may well not be. Yeah.
So with that, if you're confident in it, have we, there's, usually when you go out to bid, you develop unit pricing for any overages that are going to occur? Have we gone out and got unit pricing?
And did what?
If there's, your paving portion of it, do you have unit pricing set up? Or is that a fixed bid? Unit pricing?
So, I mean, you're, you're talking with the bid from the contractor? So the bid with the contractor was set up by division? So they're all, they're all down by division? We don't, it's not broken out by like, you know?
But it is by division and locked.
What's that?
But we are locked on.
Oh, it's their bid. Yeah, so they, they're bound to that bid. They can't come back later. So I was going to comment.
It's a fixed bid.
Yeah, I was going to comment that the confidence level that I have is is high because we've already spent almost a million. That's in the package, stuff like that. Of the unknowns or unspent, the three point six of the bid is a bid, that they're, they're bound to that. So that, you know, they can't come back and say, oh, wait, we want to go up to four point five.
Do we have any unknowns that you don't have estimates or bids on yet?
I guess the only unknown is our estimates for like the site work around, because we're, we're doing the site work in-house after the building pad has been put down. And but we have, we, in our numbers, we accounted for like additional civil engineering to to come up with site plan after the the pad's been poured, and then we'll develop, you know, any adjustments to utilities and stuff like that.
Our geo report came back satisfactory?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, really good. I mean, the site used to be a a concrete yard, so I mean, it's rock solid. Yeah.
Have you set up contracts with Pacific Power yet?
Contracts with Pacific Power? I mean, we are already in communication with Pacific Power for all of our needs. They already understand we're going with three-phase power, new transformers, stuff like that. We had.
Specifications for the transformers to come.
Yeah, those have already been specified.
And have those been ordered?
We have them, basically, we're trying to clarify the, we put a, got a bid for them with our first, first round of bidding back in May, June, and I'm, I got a phone call into the, I think, north side electric to double check and make sure all the numbers are still good, but I haven't heard back from them yet.
I just know, being in construction, I understand the lead times, and we have switching equipment.
Yeah, and, yeah, we know, we know lead times, yeah. We have, we've specified, we had lead times on the original quote. We've asked for updated lead times and and prices. That's why we're actually pursuing the electrical equipment for the the larger switch, switchboards, switch gears, because we want to get those ordered before we get, you know, a month or two down the road into contract, then they're two or three months behind where they could be. Yeah, or more.
Uh, let's see, I had one, how, since this is over an acre, you're well into the twelve-hundred C permit, I would assume?
Yeah.
And your ESPC's done.
Expecting to get the, I'm hoping to get the twelve-hundred C back early December.
It's been submitted.
Yeah, it's been submitted. Everything's submitted for twelve-hundred.
Know that that project flows straight into the, into the creek, so.
Yeah, yeah. We have erosion control plans, erosion control. We have a sea salon staff that's going to be doing all the site work. We hired lock engineers to produce the the erosion control. We also got them on board for being our civil through the project, so we're looking forward to it.
And we're well on our way, and we're going to be ready with the the temporary quarters and everything by the time we demolish the old quarters?
I believe we will. Yeah.
Well, we're not going to, you're saying the temporary quarters for the, we're not going to demo the current quarters until we have the temporary quarters, so yeah.
Making sure we have heat.
Yeah.
We're not going to freeze things.
No.
I mean, this is a horrible time of year to get started.
The, the units came with HVAC systems fully intact. The second they were energized, the AC started blowing this summer.
So trucks are already in the heated quarters, are they not?
Yeah, we have, we have heated quarters within the H building.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Okay.
So I'll just note that, that's kind of the conclusion to this. Gary alluded to it earlier. We'll bring a an interfund loan resolution to the city council, probably within, it could be December ninth is the likely date for that, to be able to identify where we can utilize existing funds within our our budget for this project, so we can get the ball rolling until we get the total financing done, probably sometime after the new year in, you know, February, March.
One last thing, Mayor. Just reiterating, making sure the public hears, because we have people in the audience today and people are listening. One of the neat, nice things about this project is the expansion and intergovernmental agreements. We just picked up another intergovernmental agreement with Grand Ron, and I'm sure that there are others that are starting to come for the service, so this is a, is, I don't want to say a profit center, but it is.
It is.
So.
It's a revenue generator.
Yeah, we're going from, in the old building, we had two service bays, and in, yeah, small service bays. Big trucks were serviced outside in the weather into the new building, which will have, well, depending on how you look at it, there are, there are four pull-through bays that are long enough to fit three or four vehicles each, and then one single bay, a ninth bay. So I anticipate that at any given time in a realistic setup, in the pull-through bay, we can have two vehicles, one on each side of the bay, and have a mechanic who's servicing one vehicle while he's waiting for parts on another, and just kind of go back and forth that way. So we could have four sets of two going at the same time. Plus, as mentioned before, some of those could be the very large vehicles, and we will have the headroom now to to lift those up and be able to service them inside.
And all of it indoors?
All of it indoors.
So I think the potential for having other local governments come to us for automotive services is great. Up to this point, it's been hard for us because we haven't had the capacity to accommodate it. So we're putting ourselves in a good position that way, and I, I see some very good things coming in the the coming years for our fleet services.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. So the next item is starting on page thirty-eight of the council agenda, and it's the creation of a technical advisory committee for the transportation system plan project and appointment of those members of that committee. So with the technical advisory committee, they are just getting ready to start their work, and so there's a roster on page, I believe, thirty-nine, or page forty of the council packet. And so we're still actually even soliciting those members to be part of the committee. We've, we've gotten a lot of them to say yes, but there's a few more. But because we want to get this project underway, we're asking you to authorize all of them to be appointed potentially. I will note that two of the committee members, Rich Spofford and Tyler, sorry, Trevor Peterson, currently serve on two of our committees already, and so we do have in our committee manual a rule against having more than, a person serve on more than two committees appointed by the council, and so we're asking for an exception, in this case, for both those individuals. The reason that they are being asked to be on this advisory committee is because of their role on the other committees. So one being on the planning commission, the other doing parks and recreation work and south, or and urban renewal work. We feel that it's appropriate for them to be serving in this capacity in the role of their service on those other committees. And so with that, there's a recommended motion on page thirty-nine.
Should we include that in the, in the motion? The, the exception to our rules?
Yeah, maybe so, just so that's clear.
I mean, we, because that is the rule, and if we're going to, yeah.
Yeah, and it's on the record here in the, just in the, in the discussion, but probably would be fine to add that to the motion to form the advisory committee and appoint its members listed in attachment A and exempt Rich Spofford and who else?
Trevor Peterson.
Trevor Peterson, from the two-committee limit under the committee manual.
I didn't do the fact that they're.
No, do you need to do that? Yeah. That's, that's in the record.
I'd like to see that, leave, see it done that way.
Move to form the transportation system plan project technical advisory committee and appoint as its members the individuals listed in attachment A and offer an exemption for Rich Spofford and Trevor Peterson to serve on this committee in, in the event that.
From the two-committee limit.
From the two-committee limit, yes.
Second.
Any more questions?
Any more signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Something to change chairs. So I appreciate Tom Gilson's work and support on this topic. We did come to the council earlier this month and kind of present this topic, and so the Federal Mercy Management Agency was sued by the Audubon Society over international flood insurance program not addressing the Endangered Species Act and compliance with that. So what, what that means is by December first of this year, FEMA issued a biological opinion that says we have to implement these pre-compliance implementation measures. And the, the measures that we are, are given, there's three choices. One is to prohibit all development within the floodplain. The second is to adopt a model ordinance, which basically prohibits all development in the floodplain. And the third option is to evaluate on a permit-by-permit basis a development within the floodplain, looking at habitat assessments to ensure compliance with the Endangered Species Act. So any of those options are likely to require some action by the city council, and tonight, because we're before December first and we're not going to meet again until after December first, we have a a recommendation for the council to consider, really kind of looking for a consensus today, because our recommendation is, don't make a final decision. We don't have enough information from FEMA at this point. They're still working out the kinks on their end, and so we don't want to paint ourselves into a box that we, where we don't know all the information. So we will be able to give kind of an indication to FEMA that this is the direction that we think we're going to go, and so that's kind of the recommendation that we're looking for tonight in the consensus. So again, these are the three options that I mentioned. Adopt a model ordinance that considers impacts to species and their habitat, requires mitigation, and a no-nat-loss standard, and that's a no-nat-loss of habitat. So, you know, soil, vegetation, water, stuff of that nature. Number two is the habitat assessments and mitigation plan for development on a permit-by-permit review and approval process, and the third is prohibition of development within the special flood hazard areas. So last time, we didn't produce a map of the entire city showing the, the special flood hazard area and the Rickel Creek and the North Fork of Ash Creek, so you see those here. The really dark blue line is the, the actual waterways of Ash Creek and the Rickel Creek. The lighter shaded blue area is the floodplain, the hundred-year special flood hazard area, so it extends farther, farthest point away from the creek. And then the darker shaded blue area is the floodway. So those are the, there's different regulatory requirements within the floodway versus the floodplain, versus the channel itself. So the rules that we're looking at apply to the floodplain, and so that kind of lighter blue area surrounding each of the creeks. So this is just kind of a closer-up example. I'm actually going to grab the mouse. I took it away, but I think I need it. Just to kind of help illustrate, and Tom will correct me because I'm sure I'll get this wrong. Um, yeah, thanks. So the, the pink in this diagram is showing the hundred-and-seventy-foot buffer. That's a riparian buffer along the, the channel of both the Rickel Creek and the North Fork of Ash Creek. And so the, the regulations of a permit-by-permit review, or a prohibition on development within the floodplain, or the new model ordinance, would apply to all of the areas within the floodplain, not necessarily the area of the hundred-and-seventy-foot buffer. So for example, in this top-left bubble, you can see the, the regulated, so the channel is, is here, the dark blue, and then the floodplain is this light-blue shaded area down below. You can see a little bit of it up above. It cuts right along the creek here because there's no floodplain on the north side of the creek, and then it extends a little bit out this way to the west. So the, the area where the, the pink and the blue overlap is where these special standards apply, and this model code ordinance would apply within here. Now, Tom, help me if I remember this right. The model ordinance would also apply outside of the hundred-and-seventy-foot area, so this extra area of floodplain in the blue, the, the prohibition, if you chose a prohibition, would apply here, or if you chose a permit-by-permit review, would also apply here. In this area up above the creek, where you have the hundred-and-seventy-foot buffer, but there's no floodplain, the rules would not apply in this area.
Okay, Kim, I'm sorry, you lost me.
Yes.
It, it, it applies in the areas where the pink and blue overlap, and it applies in the light blue.
Yep.
But it does not apply in the pink only.
Correct.
Okay, you didn't lose me.
Right.
Okay. Was that your question, Kim?
The first one, the model, was the first one, the model?
Model code, yep.
What did that, that first one affect?
So the model code would not allow development within the areas where the pink and blue overlap, or within the blue shaded areas down here, kind of, there's a little piece up here which extends beyond the pink, so that would apply in those areas. It would not apply in this area where there is only pink and no blue shading. So, and the same applies these other areas, but we just wanted to show you a few examples. You know, down off the North Fork of the Ash Creek, over by Holman Avenue, is this is area here, and so again, you have, the North Fork of the Ash Creek is this blue line that's kind of squiggles through here. You have pink shared area, a pink shaded area, the hundred-and-seventy-foot buffer, both on the south and on the north, but there's no floodplain on the, the extent of that. The floodplain kind of falls right closely along the creek. So again, the, the rules would apply to this area here where there is blue floodplain. It would not apply to the area of pink only, to the north and to the south. However, it would also apply to this big swath of blue that kind of goes away from the creek.
Is all of that true for the model ordinance, as well as the outright prohibition?
They all cover the same.
Yes, they all cover the same areas.
Thought so, wanted to be sure.
And so you can see, just as an example, the North Fork of the Ash Creek was actually diverted back in the nineteen eighties to follow a pattern kind of up this way, where it used to go down closer to Monmouth Cut Off Road and connect in over here. And so that's why you have a very narrow floodplain channel up here, but a lar, a lo, a larger floodplain area down here, where this area actually no longer really floods. So.
Aren't we moving it back there, though, Brian?
What's that?
Aren't we, isn't it proposed to move?
Back?
Not back here, but we are proposing a, a letter of map provision to FEMA to remove this floodplain area, to significantly change that. It will also change the floodplain area up here and actually make the area up here larger. As, you know, this is the, the mills, the property, it's on the mill side, this is the property where the paper mill was proposing to go, so you're going to see more floodplain in this, on this property up here. You're going to see. You're gonna see less down here. So where, you know, Councilor Collins, for example, lives in this neighborhood, is basically fully covered with floodplain, it's likely that that floodplain area is gonna go away when our letter, the letter of map provision goes into effect. So there's gonna be some changes with that revision, but again, just for the purposes of tonight's discussion, you know, right in this segment here, there's some areas of that 170-foot buffer that would not be subject to the rules, only the areas that share the 170-foot buffer and the blue area. But there are areas outside of the 170-foot buffer where the rules would also apply. Again, kind of indicating to where we're gonna go with our recommendation. The final area is up here in the Barbary Node. Again, you kind of have this hand-finger looking floodplain area that goes well outside of the 170-foot buffer where the floodplain regulations would apply. They would not apply to most of this pink area except for that little part there where there is floodplain, but it would not apply on the north side of the Rickarrell Creek. It would apply to a lot of the area on the south side of the creek, not this little pink area down here or the little pink area over there. Again, illustrative, you have floodplain boundary and the 170-foot buffer all along the creek that overlaps and doesn't overlap in certain areas, but just wanted to call out three kind of obvious examples so you can have an understanding of how that works. Any questions before I move away from this map?
Yeah. Hypothetically, if we adopted the permit-by-permit methodology, if you know, you may not have done this homework or you may have, I don't know, but if, if we had, if, if that policy were in effect, how many building permits in the last year or two would have been affected by it?
That's a good question. I don't have that, that answer, but I do have some data on that. So we did look at how many tax lots would be affected within the floodplain area. And so this is what that's showing there. The, the properties that are in yellow, kind of the mustard-yellow color, are privately owned. And there are, is it 517? Yep, it's a little bit small on the screen in front of me. 517 individual properties. Some of those you can see, you know, down in this neighborhood here. It's already subdivided. This is the, is that the Nottingham area? So kind of the Robin Hood street names. That's already fully built, subdivided, houses are all constructed. So you have a lot of properties in that 517 which are already kind of fully built. When you get down in the industrial area though, a number of these properties are large enough and have redevelopment potential that are gonna be pretty impacted by these rules. And so you can see the North Fork of the Ash Creek makes up 132 of the properties where along the Rickarrell Creek's 385. And then the city-owned properties, we wanted to pull those out because it's, the city does own a lot of property particularly around the Rickarrell Creek. We own 36 of the properties along the Rickarrell Creek. Where again, these rules would apply to the further build-out of the Rickarrell Creek trail system, right? And so without a permit-by-permit process which allows us to consider impacts to the Endangered Species Act, we would not be able to complete the Rickarrell Creek Trail. We would not, without the permit-by-permit review process, we would not be able to complete, you know, some industrial development opportunities down on the south side of the city. There's subdivision opportunities along the Rickarrell Creek on the north and the south side which would be inhibited by one of the options which is not a permit-by-permit review. So with that being said, staff's recommendation based on the information that we have today is supportive of a permit-by-permit approval process for development within the floodplain. However, we're not recommending that the council make a formal decision tonight because again, we're still waiting on information from FEMA. We've put requests in for information, we've not gotten the full answers back yet. And so really what we're looking for tonight is just a consensus from the council that we do want to allow development within the regulated floodplain. We understand that, that the only path to really making that happen and the most flexibility given those private and public properties for development would be through the permit-by-permit review process. If you do a prohibition, clearly you're not gonna allow any development in those areas. If you adopt the model code as it's written today, there's very, very limited uses that you can do. And so you're really kind of restricting development as we have seen it or would like to see it in the future. And so again, we're, we're looking for a consensus that yes, we want to do permit-by-permit. We believe we want to do that. But again, we need a little bit more information on how to implement that. Because if, you know, January 1st rolls around and we get a permit for development within the floodplain, we don't know how to necessarily address habitat assessments, or we don't know how to even, you know, create a form to take in that application. We don't know if we have to update our development code. And, and if we do have to update the development code, what updates need to take place? So those are the questions that we've kind of asked FEMA for some guidance on. We've not yet received it, but at least by December 1st, if the council's okay with us doing a permit-by-permit, kind of nod that's the direction that we're leaning, we can at least let FEMA know that, be in compliance with the December 1st deadline, and then come back to the council when we have further guidance on, on what that process will look like. I think that's my last slide. Yep, okay.
Do you know of any other cities ideally locally around us that have made a decision?
Tom, you're more engaged in the, kind of the online discussions that are taking place. Do you know of cities that have made the formal decision yet?
I just hear rumblings. It's kind of 50-50 split between permit-by-permit and model code.
Monmouth will be deciding tomorrow. Model code, I should say too, is kind of a pick and a poke because the, the model FEMA code is, is, is incongruent with Oregon land use laws, and so it doesn't work...
Explain that, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, it's, it's not drafted to, to meet the rest of, FEMA had a very specific purpose when they adopted the model code, and that was habitat. They didn't take into account Oregon land use. And so the model code is actually at odds with provisions of Oregon law, land use provisions. And you, you wouldn't be able to adopt that in January anyway. It's, it's, it's not implementable at this point. So FEMA has got to work that out, or DLCD has to work that out.
We can't change the land use law, only the legislature can do that.
And, and the governor's office sent a letter to FEMA, you know, asking for some more time...
They did respond.
Wanting to work through that, and FEMA responded and said, "We're not giving you an extension. We are committed to working with you to figure out, you know, how to reconcile land use and other things like that." Time will tell, right? And so, but again, I think from, from your staff's recommendation is we want to be able to allow property owners, including the city, who is a property owner along the creek with the floodplains, to be able to have the opportunity to develop and, and support and protect the, the habitat for the wildlife that need that protection. So by adopting a permit-by-permit approach, not knowing exactly how that gets implemented yet, but at least leaning in that direction, I think is, is the way that we would like to see the council go.
Hold on, I'm sorry. The reason I'm asking that question is we hear a lot of kvetching from people saying "The city is ruining everything. They let the developers just run amok." And, and I'm just wondering, is, is the, now you can't develop, is this a way around? I, I, and let me also say, I, I disagree, but I'm, I'm just asking that question.
I think if you're asking questions like, you know, "We're allowing too many houses to get built in the city of Dallas..."
Yep, that's exactly what I'm saying.
There is a lot of land outside the floodplains.
Most of it, in fact.
In fact, most of the land that's developable is outside the floodplains. And so adopting a prohibition around the floodplain is, is, it's drops in the bucket to what can be built on land outside of the floodplain and within the city's urban growth boundary. We did an analysis in 2019 from 2017 data for the housing needs analysis that showed for low-density residential land, we had a 300-acre surplus after 20 years of building on the land that's within our urban growth boundary of land for, you know, more housing. And so, and most of that is not within the floodplain. So you're not gonna stop housing by doing a prohibition along the floodplain. Really what you're damaging the most is opportunity for commercial and industrial development. And, and parks, and, and not having a Rickarrell Creek Trail. That's connected.
And your last comment segues perfectly into what I was gonna say, which is, to me, from what I said, this looks like a, a complete no-brainer. Because the permit-by-permit option is the one that keeps our options open, doesn't burden us with anything, and it keeps our options open. Seems, seems like the only way to go to me.
In fact, and the permit-by-permit is still, I mean, there is, there are some tough regulatory standards that have to be met by the developers in order to develop. And so you're not giving a free pass to developers. You're just allowing developers to have to spend more money to ensure that the habitat for the endangered species are protected.
Is there any chance that FEMA would reverse this decision with a new administration?
You know, they, they, so I've been asked this question before. I think that, you know, FEMA can, working with the NMS, National Fishery, Marine...
National Marine Fisheries Service?
National Marine, yeah. National Fishery, Marine Service. They are currently responsible for the ESA compliance. They're kind of passing that torch to FEMA who's passing it to local governments. That'll be my, my last smart-alot comment tonight. I don't see a quick change from federal policy on this issue.
And in part because this grows out of a court settlement, litigation. Yeah, so they are under a court order to be doing what they're doing as well.
No chance this litigation can go to a higher court and be reversed?
I don't think anyone's, no, no one's appealed it.
Yeah, no one's appealed, I think it's beyond, I think it's beyond that.
But, that said, there is litigation that is proceeding against this new rule as going beyond what was required in the settlement of the prior litigation, so it's just another reason not to be rushing into this.
I mean, you know, you never know. I'm not gonna hold my breath that the federal government's gonna change course in a, in a fast manner.
So how long can we... We're just planning to kick the cans under our head.
We're waiting, we're waiting for more information.
I think we're basically saying FEMA, we think we, we want to go permit-by-permit, however, you need to answer our questions before we make a final decision.
On that whole thing?
That's right, so... So feeling that that's the response we want to give to FEMA?
Oh yeah, for sure.
Permit-by-permit.
That's it, thanks.
Next on the agenda is Veterans Day celebration.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. So for the last, oh, four or five years, I believe, we have had a fireworks display on Veterans Day. This was really born out of moving our fireworks display from the 4th of July because we felt the city of Independence does a really good job with their fireworks show and their celebration, and we just didn't see a need to compete with that. And so we initially had moved the fireworks display to, we thought about moving it to Labor Day, and we did. And, but we didn't light the fireworks because that was in 2020 when we had a really dry weather and half of Oregon caught on fire. And it didn't catch on fire in Dallas because we didn't have fireworks display. So we had actually postponed it again to Veterans Day that year and have kept the celebration on that day ever since. With that being said, you know, we, we get probably, you know, I would say one to three concerned emails each year from either people who are veterans who've served in our military or people who sympathize with the negative effects that fireworks display can have on veterans, especially those who suffer with post-traumatic stress. And so being understandably sympathetic to that, the request was, was asked, you know, is there something else that we can do to honor and celebrate our veterans instead of having a fireworks display on that day, which, you know, again, can cause PTSD responses for veterans? And so I feel it's a good question. It's a topic that we've discussed before. I don't think we need to have the discussion tonight, but I am asking that the council refer that item to the Buildings and Grounds Committee so we can discuss how to do that in a more maybe sympathetic way in the future. So that's my request.
And I ask, just to be moved forward because I guess... Several complaints that day, that evening.
Oh, you did get?
Yeah, emails.
I was gonna ask, Ryan, did you say one to three comments a year?
Yeah, I usually get, you know, I don't think I've ever gotten more than like a handful. It's never been more than like five.
But you said you get a lot.
I got two this year. And they're both suffering from the...
So it was the veterans themselves that reached out?
Carriers that were complaining.
Okay.
And they said, "We can, we can prepare for the 4th of July because we know it's gonna happen." But this was kind of a surprise, and they couldn't react.
A lot of stress.
I understand what they're saying, so I thought, well, let's, let's have a conversation about it and...
Oh, honoring veterans by upsetting veterans seems kind of, you know...
So I, I forwarded everything to Brian and we decided, let's do this way and, and see if there's something else we can do next year, so...
So the mayor and I felt it's worth a, a further discussion, conversation with the, you know, council committees, so if the council's okay moving that to Buildings and Grounds Committee, we'll do that.
Some cities, like Albany has a parade, it's a big parade. Some others have parades, and there's other holidays we can do this on, but, and I don't remember what the weather was like that day, but it was, wasn't the best. Kirsten?
What can we, as a city, what can we do to ensure that we're actually reaching out to local veterans to get their opinion?
I think we can work through organizations like the VFW to say, "Hey, we're having this conversation, we want your feedback."
Right, whoever's on Buildings and Grounds, if they can do that. And then what can we do, whoever's on the Buildings and Grounds Committee upcoming, to make sure that we're actually reaching out to subject matter experts in PTSD? And, and by that, I don't mean people who like to type and sit behind their computer, but actual social workers and psychologists.
Yeah, I think we can certainly, you know, invite some guest speakers in to have that conversation.
That'd be fantastic.
And there was one time that I was complaining, and they were the caregivers.
Yeah, subject matter experts.
People dealing with it up close and personal.
Yeah.
And I know there's a lot more out there than we realize.
Yeah.
But we'll just have a conversation.
See if we can do something.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I'm, I'm a person who, I, I love fireworks, I love a fireworks display, but my opinion doesn't get to over, my voice doesn't get to, to take the place of the people for whom that day is intended.
And that's what we want to do.
Thanks.
Sounds like that'll get referred, so...
We'll refer it to the Buildings and Grounds?
Buildings and Grounds, yep.
Okay, next thing is first reading of ordinance is ordinance number 1901.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1901 is an ordinance declaring 9.2 acres, more or less, of territory being tax lot 400 and a portion of tax lot 1400 on Polk County Assessor's Map 7.5.29 CA and a portion of the neighboring property, tax lot 1304 on Assessor's Map 7.5.29 CD annexed to the city of Dallas and withdrawn from southwestern Polk County Rural Fire Protection District and designating the zoning of said property as residential low-density RL.
Is this fair ordinance number 1901 with tax... This first reading. Next, ordinance number 1902.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1902 is an ordinance declaring 0.33 acres, more or less, of territory being tax lot 10,000 on Polk County Assessor's Map 7.5.32 CD annexed to the city of Dallas and withdrawn from southwestern Polk County Rural Fire Protection District and designating the zoning of said property as residential low-density RL.
Is this fair ordinance number 1902 to pass this first reading? Any discussion? Okay, next item is resolution, resolution number 3538.
Thank you, Mayor. So resolution 3538 is a resolution honoring Mark O'Hatfield and renaming Birch Park as Mark O'Hatfield Park. So for a little bit of context on this, I don't know, Mayor, do you want to start the conversation?
Mark Hatfield was a legislator, and he was born in Dallas, and he grew up here until he was his teen, early teens, somewhere in that timeframe when they...
Well, something like that.
Salem. And I was talking with Brian about it.
Keep going.
I don't want to eat it. Have some ketchup.
We want to hear you though.
So he grew up here, and we never really honored him for anything in, in Dallas. And he's helped us, he gave some funding for the library, he's helped other things, been very helpful for the community, and then we haven't really honored him. for the community. And then we haven't really honored him. And we thought this might be a good way to honor him. We've, I think, contacted the family.
We will contact the family.
Mm-hmm. Thought this might be a good approach. I'm not sure which houses are the ones he lived in for a while, but it's not that far from this park. And also, he was a childhood friend of my dad. And they grew up together and played together for a while, and then they moved to Salem.
The northeast corner of the intersection of Ellis and Hader. Yeah, Pearl Pearl's place. Yeah. Northeast corner of the intersection of Hader and Ellis. It's a big old.
Is that why you chose Birch?
Huh?
Is that why you chose this park in the neighborhood?
Close by.
Closest to his. It's in the neighborhood. You know, this park was built after Mark O'Hattfield lived there. So this park didn't exist at the time. But it's in the neighborhood in the vicinity of where he would have grown up and would have been, you know, playing on the streets and stuff like that. So, you know, Birch Park is just named after the street that it's located on, Birch Street. It's not, we're not taking away, you know, some significant name of a park, like other parks we have that are named, like Ian Tony Park, for example, and giving it to someone else. In this case, it's a city facility, it's a park, you know, it's in the neighborhood of where Mark O'Hattfield grew up. And we feel it was a good choice for honoring him and his service to the community, to the state, to the country in his service.
Just piling on to what both of you said, this is a splendid idea. Mark O'Hattfield's one of the most distinguished public servants the state's ever had, and we are his hometown, and this is long overdue.
Never lost in the election.
That's right, never. And he still holds his record. And he holds, he broke McNairy's record as the longest-serving senator from Oregon. Still holds it.
Anyway, that's what that's all about. Anything else? Any other questions, comments?
We need a vote?
Requires a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Shane.
Yes.
Counsel President Schilling.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Barantos.
Yes.
Counsel Briggs.
Yes.
Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
As a reminder, our next meeting is going to be on Monday, the 16th.
9th.
9th.
9th. 2nd of Monday.
Yeah. That's correct.
So if you show up on the 16th, I'll probably be there, but.
Second it.
So.
Meeting on the 2nd.
A meeting on the 2nd.
Meeting on the 2nd, meeting on the 9th.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. Meeting adjourned.